A big picture, high level overview of what ADUs are and kind of what we know about them at this time. We have had the topic in our comprehensive plan since 2002 with the general language saying that it's something that needs more study. And so, we think that there's been enough interest both from the council and from the private sector now. We have some members of the private sector here today that have asked recent questions about what can be done and what might we want to talk about to allow it to happen in the future. We feel like it's the right time to have more discussion and probably a full-blown look into this topic so that we know what we're dealing with and how it might apply best to Lincoln, Nebraska. And with that, I think I'm just going to hand off to Brandon because he has a lot of good information and then we can open it up for questions and discussion afterwards.
Okay, thank you. Like David said, this is just going to be kind of a brief overview of a lot of various traits of accessory dwelling units. I tried to mix throughout the presentation a number of different images that I found related to accessory dwelling units so that it can kind of help get that into your mind, what people are doing with these around the country.
That's lovely, the first shot, is that in Lincoln?
Yeah, I have no idea where that came from.
It's in Australia or New Zealand, I think.
It looks, it looks very comfortable.
Yeah.
And, and they still have a garage there as well. You know, as we go through this process, or eventually if there's a zoning amendment that goes through, a definition will be formed, but generally looking at a number of communities, it's, it's a self-contained dwelling unit on the same lot as a single-family dwelling. So by a dwelling unit, I mean it's going to have a place to sleep, it's going to have a kitchen, it's going to have a bathroom, those three minimum things, usually a living area, or it's done in kind of a studio style. Typically, an ADU has shared utilities with the main property, or the main house, for example. Usually has its own entrance, usually no more than two bedrooms, depends on the community. It could be one bedroom or, or two bedrooms. Most often, it will state it can only have one bathroom and one kitchen. Typically, the ADU in single-family dwelling are considered one property with one owner. It may not be subdivided or otherwise sold separately. And typically, the owner of the property must reside on the premises. So, the reason a lot of communities will put in a lot of these different measures is to, I guess, help to restrain or contain the living situation that may be going on in relation to the, the accessory dwelling unit. So, for example, you wouldn't have a whole bunch of unrelated people living out there and making a lot of noise, that sort of thing. So, quite often, very, it's very restricted to, to a number of bedrooms or one bathroom, all as means to help to restrict that activity out there. There are a lot of different reasons as you read about accessory dwelling units. A lot of times, it's to provide a home for a relative, whether, whether that's a, an older generation or a younger generation. It's often perceived as an affordable housing option, especially in those very high-cost areas here in the United States. Sometimes, they're just like a guest house, or pool house, or a hobby house, where, where you have basically all the requirements to be an accessory dwelling unit, but it's, there's really no one living out there permanently. A lot of times, you will see, this is kind of a special needs option, where someone has certain medical needs, or they have disabilities, and you want to be able to take care of them close by. Some people look at them as an alternative income source, where they could rent out that piece of the property, whether it be the ADU, or the owner living in the ADU and renting out the house. So that's kind of, it can swing both ways there. The, the option to age in place is very attractive to a lot of people, especially if they really love the neighborhood that they're in. They don't want to have to move off to another location, or an apartment, or a senior living type facility. I found this graphic below, and I thought it, it does a good job of illustrating kind of how a, a generation or an owner can kind of move through this property as they age. So, you look at 2016, let's focus on the green people. So, the green people, let's say they start as a young family, they're living in the main house, and then they're renting out the ADU to another couple people. Eventually, the family grows, they're in 2026, you see, and now they feel like they need to use the whole property. They don't really have room for the additional people. Then you fast forward to 2046, the, the green people have now, maybe they've moved into retirement age, they have decided to move into the ADU, and now they rent out the house. The comprehensive plan will, will note a number of demographic factors that we have coming through our community and other communities. We have the baby boomers hitting retirement age, we have the millennials coming up in age and forming households. We have a major increase in single-person households in Lancaster County projected. It's an 81% increase from 2010 to 2040, from 32,000 single-person households to 58,000. So, you could see where maybe this is an additional market, where maybe someone doesn't want to buy an entire house, but an accessory dwelling unit might suit them fine. We also have either the younger people delaying marriage, in, in a lot of cases, in household formation. A lot of cases where there are older people living alone, or widowed, or divorced, or they have certain medical needs. There are lots of different types of ADUs that different communities have employed. Two basic types, attached or detached. Now, looking at attached, let's think of the, the main house and just adding on to it. Add on to the back, or add on to the side. Or maybe there's some attic space, or a basement that could be converted and brought to code. They could maybe just carve out an existing portion of the house. Maybe there's a way to partition a unit within the existing house. On the detached options, a lot of times, and a lot of these images will portray the cottage style, where it's really a standalone house, like in the backyard. And then there's garage conversions. You can see them converting the actual garage, and basically the, the garage parking goes away because it's a house now. Or, people will utilize the garage, still for parking, but they'll put the unit on top. Here are just some, some images or examples of different ways that an ADU could be employed on to the same lot, or the same example over and over again. If you look at the blue, the blue portion would be the ADU in all of these examples. I won't really go through these in much detail, but you can see there are a variety here that we're showing with detached or attached examples as they would be done in other communities. Here's another style of house, and imagining how it could be done. You know, a walkout basement would be very conducive to a basement conversion for an accessory dwelling unit, especially since the, the plumbing is, and electrical are all there already. Very common housing type, in Lincoln, the split level. This is just a variety of ways that you could employ a, an ADU on that type of property. Another trend, and I've alluded to this before, is the, the medical cottage, where it's, it's a very specific kind of unit that's, you know, it's built ADA. It's, you know, it has all of the, the certain special needs, or equipment, or furnishings that someone with certain disabilities or medical needs might, might have. And I think in pretty much all of our ADU procedures that we would go through here would, would include a, a building that would be considered its own structure. In, in some of the literature, they've talked about businesses that have medical cottages that are kind of a temporary kind of thing, so think of like the, the pods concept, except it would be a living unit that's, that's put into a backyard, and then once that medical situation has passed, then that company would, would come and, and take that away. That's a whole other, whole other issue, because we're not talking about permanent construction. Tenants, a lot of different communities will look at, or kind of define what sort of people could live there. You've got the coconut man here with his margaritas. But in almost every case that I've found, it will state that the owner must reside somewhere on the premises. They're either living in the house, or they're, they're living in the ADU. And then the other, the other people that may be living there are either guests, or relatives, or renters. They're living in the ADU, or the main structure, whichever one the owner's not living in. And, in many cases, it, it limits, it limits the property to the definition of one family. So, and by our zoning code, you know, you could have a family and a non-related, you know, an unrelated person living with you in your house, this would just extend it out into the ADU. Size of ADUs, this is very broad-ranging, and lots of different ways to determine this. Some were even calculated on percentage of the, the house. Like, how big is the house, you're allowed a certain percentage. That way, your ADU wouldn't be bigger than the house. But typically, a lot of the communities fell in that 400 to 800 square feet range. And, quite a few of them also further defined it and said, no more than two bedrooms. Lot size required, some communities also said, well, certain size of lots cannot even have these. And that was all over the board, 4,000 to 40,000 square feet. Obviously, 40,000 is nearly an acre. 4,000 is smaller than the typical Lincoln lot. Typical Lincoln lot's like 50 by 142, that's 7,100 square feet. So, these are just kind of giving you an idea of, of what other communities have done, and what, what we would have to consider if we were to go forward with any sort of ordinance change. Parking, it was almost across the board. They would state that they would require one additional parking stall. I think Portland said zero, zero extra stalls. Design considerations, I threw this one in here because it's not a particularly attractive accessory dwelling unit. So, I think Lincoln would do well to examine our neighborhood design standards. Maybe we add some additional language in there. Different communities have looked at different things, even to the point of roof pitch, or similar materials to the main house, so that it looks like they're kind of, they're associated in some way.
Bedos.
Where is that?
I, I don't know where this came from, but it's, it's known locally as the boot.
It looks like a place I stayed that overlooked the ocean, and they were trying to get an ocean view.
Well, they have a great view of their neighbors' yards.
What's that? I was going to say that's Portland.
Now, as far as Lincoln, as far as Lincoln goes, in our current zoning ordinance, they're currently not allowed as permitted conditional or special permitted uses in the R1 through R4 zoning districts. However, you could have one in the R5 through R8 zoning districts, where they would allow apartments. But more than likely, you would probably use your apartment zoning for building an apartment, rather than an ADU. We do have throughout Lincoln grandfathered ADUs in a, in a lot of the older neighborhoods. An additional option is get a historic preservation special permit. Where you have historic property, you get it declared a, basically a local landmark. You get a special permit then for the permission to build an ADU. And we also have newer developments, planned unit developments and community unit plans. Right from the start, they'll say that, you know, these lots may have accessory dwelling units. And then that way, people can build them by right, because they've been approved upfront. Potential next steps, you know, the planning department could set up an ADU working group to examine the topic and formulate a solution that is suitable for Lincoln, and maybe also the, the rural areas, the agricultural areas. We get a lot of questions, the planning department, about ADUs in the county as well. Little-known fact, Abraham Lincoln was born in an ADU. This, this is his, this is his birthplace. But I think, you know, if we, we kind of hip this up a little bit, I think he'd still be cool with the idea here in Lincoln.
Land of the ADUs.
That's fantastic, John.
Yeah, well, I appreciate you coming forward. I, I really ask that this be accelerated by planning because of some things Roy has worked on in the past. And also, I have a tenant, Brian Workman, who works with elder people, and approached me some time ago in recent months, and about this whole idea. And is looking at it, you know, just was on the one slide there, talks about the changing demographics, where we now have elders that we care for, and just to help the families as a unit. I thought, maybe the time has come that we really look at this seriously. And in examining it, I did some research, because in other parts of the world, I think Australia and New Zealand has done a lot of this. I think some of those photographs are from there. But, one of the things, in looking at our situation in Lincoln, and thinking back on the concerns of neighborhood organizations and so forth, we've, we may have some different considerations there. I know one good example is that people would be very concerned if you let someone rent it out to anybody, from the standpoint, you might get some younger people, or that have parties and so forth, that would destroy the framework, or I shouldn't say destroy, but would impair the neighborhood concept. And so, there'd be elements like that. There are also, and I don't know if you've covered it, but there's some of these ADUs that are actually portable. I think Roy, you had shared with me that, where they bring them in on a flatbed, set them down with the proper plumbing and electrical connections. And then they could even be removed later, if, say, apparent or something. But, and I liked your one slide going from the evolution over the three periods of a family's life. So anyway, I just wanted to mention that as some background.
Brandon, are there some, what does Lincoln have currently on the books for the percentage that is allowed to build on a lot? Is there a percentage that you can't overbuild your lot? You know, it happens in some communities that they could, you showed one slide where you can't have the ADU now be much bigger than the home. But currently, do we have a percentage allowable to be for a house? And then is there a percentage, I know you said they're doing it different ways?
I, I'd have to, I'd have to reexamine that, because there have been some changes recently to our accessory buildings ordinance. But we, we do, or we did have a, a maximum percentage of the rear yard that was allowed to be covered. So you couldn't just go to the full setbacks and, and fill it in with accessory buildings, that sort of thing. These are all things that a committee would have to take into consideration. Let's, and I didn't even mention height. Different communities have different height. We, on the books now, we have an accessory building height. Is it that, or is it, is it less? Are you allowed to build them in the rear yard, or does it have to be in the buildable envelope of the lot? Lots of different considerations.
Do you know how many ADUs we currently have in Lincoln? And, and are they, is that how we recognize them, or are they called something different at this point?
I, I have no idea how many we have.
I remember living in one years ago, and so, a lot of years ago, but.
I don't know if we have a great way to track that, especially the ones that have been grandfathered. I mean, I think we could get a decent accounting for the, the newer developments that approved them upfront. Especially the, the, the non-conforming, or the, the ones that never were legal. I think there are a number of those out there as well, that, that would never, would not even be on the books.
So are they grandfathered in?
The, there are some that are grandfathered, but there are some that exist that did not meet the, the criteria for grandfathering, or were, you know, they were put up illegally, or after a, a zoning change had occurred, that would not have allowed that.
So, what happens to those buildings?
I, I don't know what would happen to the, the, the illegal non-conforming buildings. I, I would, I wouldn't know.
Good answer.
So, when did we change the policy on if they were called something different, or on grandfathering these people in? Do we, do we know when we changed it?
I wouldn't know that specifically, but historically, it probably would align with zoning ordinances coming on, different rounds of the zoning ordinance. So, we had, we've had several in the past, but I know 1965 was a date, 1979 is the code that we're currently operating on. So, at any point along the way, if we enacted a, a zoning code, more than likely, it would have gone to a more suburban model that would have eliminated that as an allowable type of use.
So we don't know? We don't know when we, people could have been doing this before, and we changed something, and they're not allowed to build it anymore? Because there's three of them in my neighborhood, and I've always wondered about it.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I don't know when, when that, that would have occurred. And it, it may vary based on the zoning district as well.
Do we actually use ADU in our code, or is that more the common? Because I think, don't we use like detached building, and I'm thinking in terms of working sheds, or some of these storied sheds, and maybe detached garages? And then, as I recall, a lot of the ones that exist, it's may have been carriage houses, and some old historic buildings, or maybe a detached double garage that was converted, with adding some living. I, I can't think of any specific ADUs that were constructed in Lincoln.
Yeah.
So it's kind of a new evolving concept.
By the zoning code, since, since we don't have it on the books, and the zoning code is something specific, there's nothing to refer to, really. Now, on those case-by-case bases, where we had a new plan, like a community unit plan, or planned unit development, come through on the plan sheet, or through the approval process, in the resolution or the ordinance, it would have said, you know, this is approved for this many dwelling units, and this many accessory dwelling units.
Did it use accessory dwelling units, or did you say detached units or something? Other colleagues would comment on that.
So, on newer ones like Fallbrook and Village Gardens, they specifically state accessory dwelling units. Because that's a term that's been used for the last 20 years or so. But probably going back in time, certainly since our 1979 ordinance, we haven't allowed a separate dwelling unit in a separate building from the main one in our R1 through R4 districts. We have, if you have a big enough lot to have a duplex, well, then you could have two units attached to each other. But even in our R1 to R4, where we allow duplexes, they have to be attached. We don't allow them to be detached. And so, I would guess even probably pre-70s, 1970s, that was the case as well, they weren't allowed. Certainly, right after World War II, when there was a real housing shortage for a period of time, quite a few of them probably came in in the late 40s, early 50s, and were legal. Grandfathered one in, because our early zoning ordinances then came in in the early 50s. And so, probably since about that time period on, is when we haven't had them as a specific use.
So, talk about basements. For these, in terms of can a, a separate accessory dwelling unit have a basement?
Oh, like a detached one, like, like the one pictured here. I don't see why not. The, typically in, when you go to building and safety, and you, you get a, a permit for a house, or whatever, or when the assessor's looking at it, for example, typically, they don't consider the basement as part of the livable space. So I imagine there would be a way to, to do that. Now, maybe that's something that this committee would take into consideration and write in specifically. You know, anything, it is, is on the table here. When you're creating something new in the ordinance, you could specify that, you know, accept, or something, except, you know, basements cannot count, or not be included in accessory dwelling unit.
Question about use. In Lincoln, can we do renting out your, your room for a Husker game, or something? Bed and breakfast, we, I don't think we can do that.
Not, not short-term rentals.
Okay, right.
Well, to clarify.
In residential.
With this group, Willie wouldn't be looking, as we were visioning it, to look at a separate topic of short-term rentals. We do have the option of that as a home occupation. So, some people, as long as you don't use more than 20% of the house, which is our home occupation rule, and you live on the site, it is legal today to have rent out a, a bedroom. But renting out the entire house, that would be a different matter. That is not allowed, because you're not then residing on the premises. But that, that really, nationwide, typically, that falls under short-term rentals, and there's different rules and regulations covering that separate. Because these are the permanent dwellings for those persons versus being temporary.
Is, but your question was more of like an Airbnb concept, right?
And we have some of that going on. I know we've had some concerns in neighbors, that another neighbor is renting out for football or something, and it violates our.
Yes, so, so some of the listings, probably on some of the websites, may not follow our home occupation ordinance. Because we've had a few that have had complaints, and the city is then taking action against those.
Can we look at that too? If we're going to look at this, should we look at that too?
That would be a, another effort, because it, just because the impacts of it are, are different. And so, that would be something we'd have to take a look at, as to our, our staffing, to be able to take that on as, and it would also be a different group of people who are interested in that, versus people who are interested in building a permanent dwelling in the backyard.
But, it's not going away.
No, it is not. It would be something that needs to be addressed, certainly.
I mean, since they started in 2008, it's grown pretty rapidly. It's something we probably need to get on to.
Yes, and again, there, there's a certain amount of those today that are allowed. Anything in the downtown, basically, that is through that, the downtown being a commercial zoning district allows that. So a lot of the ones that are listed in the downtown are all perfectly legitimate. But today, we're taking them on a complaint basis, when somebody is renting out the whole house, bedroom by bedroom, versus renting it to somebody to, to permanently reside in.
Thank you.
I, I'm kind of curious how people react on this, and just the idea of what could be beneficial to our citizens, and still respectful, especially to the neighborhoods. David, if you've got some thoughts?
Well, as Brandon pointed out, I think our thought was to, we went through a process for the accessory building topic recently. And then came forward with a change in the code to address that topic, as far as the size of the buildings in relation to the, the lot, and the size of the, the primary structure. We felt like that process went well, and we would bring in a range of interests to sit in that, on that committee, to talk through the different issues, and to lay all the different options out, and then to kind of whittle it down to what makes sense for Lincoln. So that's what we proposed to do going into the new year, if that, if there's. So, that's what we proposed to do, going into the new year, if there's interest, I mean, if there really is an interest, then I don't think we would do that, but we get the feeling that there is interest, and we want to address the topic, and that's what we would propose to do.
I would think the process needs to reach out, so that, you know, people who have concerns, and undoubtedly, change always brings out concerns in people, to get those discussed, so they can think it through, but, and I think, Trent, what you were saying, maybe this is in Carl with the Airbnbs, to kind of readdress some of the housing that goes on, so that if we've got an effort, maybe that could be a kind of a side thing to.
And as Steve pointed out, I mean, that we're also going to have to be careful with our staff time, just because we don't want to short-change either topic, we want to fully address each one, so it might take a little time to get through, if we were to take on both topics, so.
Would there be some way of having informational gathering, where a similar presentation could be given, and the public encouraged to come, and maybe two of them, one on the temporary rental, and then this idea, so you get extra parties, and the seniors' foundation, and just a whole host of people, and air it out, and just see what you hear, and do a simple questionnaire, so that you cover a lot of ground, you get a lot of people there, realtors, others.
Yeah, I think we could do something like that. Another way to think about that is that I think the, whatever ongoing discussion and committee that we'd put together, would have those range of interests being represented regardless, so.
I agree.
I mean, we certainly could do a little bit of an outreach, to ask some stakeholders what their level of interest and/or concern is with that, and have that, but I would perhaps bring that maybe to a kickoff meeting of that work effort, instead of maybe that being the determinant of whether or not we address this or not, because I get the feeling that it's a topic that should be addressed regardless.
I guess I'm thinking sort of in-between there, that you have the meeting, even before you form the committee, just get it out there, and get a community dialogue, this is my thought, and I'm sure go along with the majority, but get the dialogue over a few weeks, and see what you hear, because it'll bring out different ideas, and maybe some things we had thought of, and then from that, see interested parties, and reach out, and get a diverse group together, and proceed to really focus on, that'd be my thought.
David, you said that there were people with you today who were interested in this, is anybody prepared to come forward?
Does anybody want to say anything this time? From the audience?
What questions would you have?
Ryan, why don't you come forward, since you were interested in this?
Tell us about your interest.
And introduce yourself, what you do.
Yeah, well, I'm Brian Workman, and I, we have a business called Sunlight Support, Senior Care Solutions, and we help folks age in their home, or age in place, that's our, everything that we do, so, from non-medical in-home caregiving, to home modifications, and if the time is right, and we need to help them move, we'll help them move into more skilled care. Families are really, the folks that we see, families are really put in a position where they, if they don't have an option like this, they kind of tend to panic, and, well, I don't have time for it, so mom and dad has to go into more skilled care. This obviously gives an option where, you know, they can stay close, but maintain that family dynamic still, and independence, and then just a great safe place for folks to age. And the size that we were looking at, some of the models that we've looked at, in the four-hundred square foot range, would really lend itself to not be conducive to partying, and, I mean, I know high school, college kids can get pretty creative, but this really wouldn't probably allow for that.
Thank you.
Question for Brandon, in his research, you mentioned design standards, you would recommend be a central piece of the discussion, given the boot versus this, were there other things that you found needed to be a part of the discussion, to try and mitigate concerns of stakeholders?
Let me just flip through, yeah, I think, you know, setbacks are considered to be one of the important elements, even the location, or the position of the door, the entry, some communities even talked about windows, in terms of, you know, do they face right onto the neighbor's backyard, you know, some privacy concerns. I mentioned building materials, roof pitch, height, a lot of these things are done in combination, or selectively by different communities. Can't think of anything else right offhand, design-wise, but.
Design-wise, I mean, just since you touched on design standards.
And, yes, I think that, I think it would be appropriate for Lincoln, if Lincoln goes forward with a zoning change, to also add in a design piece of some sort, that kind of addresses at least how the neighbors would view the property from their properties. I, you know, I added a couple of examples in there, like the boot, the famous boot, and the one I called the coconut house. So, you could get some people that are very creative, we have some very creative architects in the community, and accessory dwelling units lend themselves to those creative projects. So, you know, I think we need to, I guess, consider a lot of different factors, and certain design elements might be part of that, in considering the neighbors.
Is parking a concern as well, though, and you mentioned usually there's one stall required, but is that, people get concerned about, Steve's jumping up.
Well, and as Brandon mentioned, the other thing, I think that would probably come up in terms of the process, would be, is it allowed by conditional use? There's thirty conditions, ten conditions, you meet those, you just go get your building permit, versus a special permit, where they're approved one by one by one. And so, I think that would be another question that would be asked of the group, is what level of comfort do you have, can we find ten conditions that make everybody comfortable, or does it still one by one go to the planning commission or city council?
And if we're approving them with the requirement that the owner reside on the property, that kind of brings up a whole other set of issues, and certain contracts, or things that need to be filed, with the register of deeds, or something, and some communities will mention putting a lien on the property even, in that case, some have annual inspections, or recertification of the accessory dwelling units.
Thank you. Super informative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
David, can I have a minute?
Yep.
All right. Will the jury?
I want to talk to Brian.